The following program is a production of Ho'ikee Kauai Community Media.
Aloha and welcome to a special series of interviews with your Kauai County Council candidates. I'm Lexi Jones, Vice Chair of Ho'ikee Community Television.
And I'm Mark Periello, President of the Quiet Chamber of Commerce. We're honored to bring you these conversations, giving each candidate the opportunity to share their vision for our island's future.
Today, we'll be speaking with Billy DiCosta, who's eager to share his ideas and plans for our community. These interviews are an important part of our democratic process, giving you the chance to learn more about who's running and why.
Our hope is that these conversations inspire you to engage in the process and to vote. Every voice matters and your vote is crucial to shaping the future of Kauai.
So let's dive in. Please welcome Billy to the conversation.
Thank you, Lexi and Mark. I appreciate being here. I'm a little nervous hanging around two community members that I highly respect and thank you for putting this on. Thank you to all the people watching today. It's very important in our United States states and counties to get involved in voting. If you don't get involved, your voice doesn't get heard and you cannot grumble if you don't get your political leader in.
There you go, no grumble, right?
It's important to be here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're happy to have you here with us today. So why don't we dive into some of these questions? First, why don't you introduce yourself to our audience and tell us a little bit about why you have decided to take on the kuliana of leadership in our community?
First of all, my name is Billy DiCosta. I've been a four-generation Portuguese Spaniard on the island. My family links all the way back to the first voceros that came and taught Kanaka how to rope and raise cattle. My Portuguese side came from the Madeira Islands in the sugar industry. Actually, when I did my family historical tree, all the way back to the 1600s, my family were growing sugar as workers in the sugar plantation way back when sugar was made by squeezing cane and getting out the juice. So local boy went to college in California at Humboldt State, got a business degree with concentration economics, came back, married my soulmate. She's the pillar and the rock of our family. She's an empowered woman who makes more than me. She's a nurse. She was at Wilcox for 27 years, now at KVMH, working on her second retirement. I raised three boys, two of which are on the mainland, one in college, one as a nurse like his mother in Kirkland, Washington. My oldest boy is in the electrical union, in the trades industry. And I ran for politics because I felt that all the hard work that I did growing up on the plantation, working summer jobs on the Robinson Ranch, carrying those spray tanks that weighed 90 pounds, which nobody know, today they have those little plastic tanks that weigh maybe 25 pounds. We used to carry the 90-pound, it was a galvanized pressurized tank. I planted grass in the plantation. I worked construction on Oahu. I took a semester off of college and worked on the power lines between Pro City and Aia and putting those towers that sit on the ridge of Oahu because I needed to put money to go to school. And I had a vision that I wanted a better life for my family. And I'm sitting here today to tell you guys without bragging that my three boys have land and homes already within my and my wife's purview of making our dreams come true. And I ran because I want to help every family on Kauai and Nihao to have the same dream and the same accomplishments. And I think it's important, if you can make it happen for your personal life, you know how to make it happen for the county or the state that you work in. So this is why I'm here.
Great. Thank you. Well, first and foremost, diving into a hot topic would be our housing affordability. Kauai faces a significant challenge in providing affordable housing for its residents. The demand of affordable workforce housing continues to outpace supply, while rising housing costs and the prevalence of off-island investments exacerbate the issue. The community has been exploring various strategies to address these challenges, including increasing the supply of affordable housing, providing rental assistance, and supporting community land trusts. Now, the question is, given the ongoing housing crisis on Kauai, what specific strategies would you prioritize to increase housing affordability? And how would you work to implement these strategies as a member of county council?
Well, thank you, Lexi, for that question. I believe my track record currently speaks for itself. And for the record, I do have rental units that I rent to local families and it's all at the county affordable rental program. So I don't just talk the story. I could be renting it for a lot more, but I want to help local families. And currently, I believe I'm helping four local families right now. I want you guys to know that this year, I introduced a tax resolution. It was to increase the hotel and TBR tax. I was told by many of my colleagues and special interest groups and business owners that this might be a cutthroat thing during election season. Why would you do that? Why would you raise taxes on the hotel tourism industry and the TBRs, TBR owners who are voters? And I did it because that was the right thing to do. We don't get into politics for the long haul. We get into politics to do good for the people and get out. If you're a career politician, then you are not doing good for the people. And I did that and I got five votes to support. I got the mayor to support, which that's one of my motifs. I work well with administration. I don't always get along and we buck heads, but I believe the respect is mutual between the mayor and the administration team. So we are allowed to do a lot of things that a lot of people don't see when we meet. And this was a done deal before we even went, you know, in front of the people to explain. So we raised the taxes on the hotel and TBRs. This money goes into a special coffer fund to the housing development, about $8 million or so a year. And now we have a checkbook, a personal checkbook for the county that we can buy land and put in infrastructure. Right now, there's been a lot of land that has been transferred among the billionaires that are here. The billionaires that are buying up chunks of land from 100 acres to 1,000 acres. They don't buy land to do public housing, middle-class housing. They buy land so they can have their personal getaway privacy. Once those lands are bought, Lexi and Mark, the lands are gone. So now the county has a checkbook. We can go out and buy ag land. We have the purview to change ag into residential. For example, if you buy a place in Puhie, right outside of the residential area on ag land, we can change the zoning. We can put nice 8,000 square foot lots with three-bedroom homes. Right now, the price square foot, about $350,000. Maybe we can work with a developer and get that priced down around $300,000. So a 1,000-square-foot home with the infrastructure, which would be about one-third the cost. So $300,000 for the home, $200,000 for the infrastructure to be put in sewer, water, and electric. And we could hopefully sell a home to the middle-class workforce housing for $500,000. And I heard many politicians talk about problems of housing. No one has come up with a solution. I've introduced a solution. It's going to get voted on here. It got voted on. It's passed. And I also introduced with Mel Reposo, a bill to increase density on ag lots, so Ag, Ag CPR. It's called a ordinance to increase the zoning of ag lands. How cool it is now that people that live up Kapahai or Waillua or areas where they have five acres of land, before they could only put one house, now they can put one house in one gas cottage. If they have two dwellings that are allocated, now they can put two gas houses with double the density, with infrastructure already in place. And that was a thumbs up from the mayor. It's not just the council. If Mayor Kaukami didn't want this thing to happen, he wouldn't sign it. So that is going to be voted on coming up soon. It's going to go to committee, just got our first reading. So I'm excited to see how our council members vote on this. And those are two solutions, Lexi and Mark, that are in place right now to put inventory back into housing.
All right. Nice. Thank you. Well done. So the next question is about economic diversification. Right, we all know this. We're very dependent on tourism here on Kauai, but it leaves the island vulnerable to economic downturns as we saw during the pandemic. There's a growing need to diversify the economy, to create more resilient and sustainable economic opportunities for our residents. Potential sectors for diversification include agriculture, technology, healthcare, renewable energy, and the arts, among others. What is your vision for economic diversification on Kauai? And which sectors do you believe hold the most promise for the island's future?
Well, as an economic concentration major in my business degree, I studied how money circulates and what's the importance of having money, homegrown money here on the county of Kauai. You know, some of the best-paying jobs are our construction industry, electrical, plumbing, drywall, concrete, carpenters. You keep that sector working and you keep smart growth. I'm not talking about exploiting Kauai. Let's get it straight now for our viewers. I'm talking about small, smart growth that we can put our tradespeople to work. When tradespeople are working, tradespeople are spending money. When they spend money, you circulate money in the economy. A lot of tourist-based industry, yes, they pay service-oriented workers, but a lot of the profit margin goes back to the parent company, which is owned in the mainland. We have many local companies, Unlimited, Shioi, we have local companies that employ local employees that spend money. I'm also a big movement into the ADC lands on the west side. I've been working on these projects since I started. Many stumbling blocks. You talk about alternative energy and going green and putting in solar farms and growing trees to put back oxygen in the ozone layers. I'm all about going green, but when we trade out going green for prominent agricultural lands that should have livestock and farming, I don't agree with that. I don't believe a solar farm should take precedence over ag lands, ag lands that should have livestock and farming. I've been introducing this to ADC with Mel Reposo. We're talking about putting small 100-acre farmers on ranch lands on the west side. They have over 12,000 acres unused. It's been unused since 1990. And for some reason, I still have stumbling blocks. Maybe I need to speak to Governor Green. But those lands are a fire hazard. They've been burnt the last couple of times in the last five years. And if we could have every family on Kauai, every family who would hooey up, meaning join together, you, Lexi, you, Mark, and me, all three of us buy a cow. And the ranch on 100 acres out on the west side raises our cow. They raise the cow to 24 to 28 months. They send it to the slaughterhouse. We pay a fee to the ranch that raised our cow. We pay a fee to the slaughterhouse who slaughtered the cow. And that's our one-third beef, one-third in your freezer, one-third in Mark's freezer, one-third in my freezer. It's a guaranteed business. It's called a co-op ranching. I learned that from some of my colleagues that I go to these conferences from Nevada and Utah. They have co-op ranching right now going on, where 80% of their cattle herd is already purchased from the time the calf is born. How cool it'd be, Lexi, if you have a pair of cowboy boots and you have a cow that's being raised by the ranch. You can call yourself a cowgirl because you have a cow. And we need to think out of the box. And those are solution-based things that I'm introducing.
Excellent.
Yeah, that's great. I have some friends who do something similar, not at scale, right? But just in their small, you know, group there. And so, right, what a great, I never thought about taking it to scale. What a great idea.
That's like a plantation mindset, right? My mom and grandma guys made sweet bread. The next-door neighbor made mochi, the Japanese. The Chinese made homemade lapchong sausage. The Filipinos had their lumpia and the okra that they would make in their peanut beet. I mean, we traded. We traded a lot. My dad was a hunter. My uncle was a fisherman. I don't see why that type of industry cannot come full circle and have a price on it. So now, instead of just trading, you trade raising the animal for the price. Instead of paying the astronomical costs at Costco safely, we were bringing all our beef that is being sent away right now. A lot of beef is being sent away. They call it in the feedlots of the mainland and then they come back packaged. How come we don't craft a feedlot here? Why don't we have a feedlot? We have over 1,200 acres of state land. I believe Robinson leases it. How cool it'd be if we could work with Robinson and create a feedlot that Hartung could grow some hay and some corn, which they're already growing. And we could graze cattle, feed them some corn and hay in the evening, and we could finish a grass-fed animal on grass and on barley, oats, and corn. And we could have a mixture of a marbleized meat that could be for the plate to be served for local families. Owned by Mark, Lexi, and Paul.
That's great.
I'm honored to be in this circle. Yes, I'm making the point.
Yes, of course. Thank you. Continuing forward, as we dive into climate change and environmental sustainability, Kauai is particularly vulnerable to the impacts of climate change, including coastal erosion, extreme weather events, and threats to natural habitats. Kauai has explored various strategies, including coastal protection, renewable energy adoption, waste reduction, and sustainable agriculture. How would you address climate change and promote environmental sustainability on Kauai?
Well, I just gave you guys my food-sustainable idea. As far as energy idea, and remember, for every solar farm that we put in, those are acreage of land that could be used to farm vegetables, fruits, and livestock. So I am for walking the fine line where all the industries are able to thrive and we make the right decision for the right people so we are sustainable. Hydro is a very sustainable form of electricity. I believe the Robinson plantation has a hydro. I believe we have a few hydras right now in Waianha Valley and up in Hanapepe. And I don't even know if those hydras are operating to full potential. But I do know one thing, that we need to have costs allocated to our local families without raising their electric bill based on putting in all these infrastructure go-green projects. Go-green projects get federal funding. And when I look through the camera, I want you guys to understand one thing. KIUC is a co-op. You own that company. You own it. I own. All the people own that company. But they're not allowed to make a profit. So when they do have profit margin monies, they have to re-spend it or give it back to the people. And this last time, we didn't get a check in the mail. I know my check was, they said they didn't make a profit. But yet they spend millions of dollars on renewable energy. I believe sometimes some of that money should go back to the constituents, go back to the electric-paying customers. Because they're the ones who own the company. Right now, we have electric panels, solar panels, they're called, in Kikaha on homes that KIUC don't buy back the power anymore because the grid is too full. So it comes a time and point when the grid is full and we need to make smarter decisions. Everything depends on our next president-elect. I don't want to talk country politics, but we have a Republican and Democrat. If our Republican win, we might not have as many green initiatives. We might go back to burning fossil fuel. If our Democrat get elected, we might try and go by 2050 totally electric. I'm not sure, but I can tell you guys one thing. If you look up lithium batteries and you look up the toxicity when you mine lithium in areas like New Mexico and Texas and Nevada, they're poisoning the water table when they extract lithium. There's no place to put lithium batteries right now in our landfill. So think out of the box is great, but how much out of the box should we think? And how can we balance both fossil fuel, solar, hydro, and keep the electric bill as inexpensive to our people as possible? That's what I represent. Coastal climate rise, it's evident it's rising. We should watch how we diversify and build. We should respect the coastal zones, do inland movement of building. But if people have kuliana lands next to the ocean, it's not up to the government to tell them, hey, we're going to take away your kuliana ocean land and move you inland because the sea level is rising. That family should have the right to hold on to the land. And if the ocean take that land someday, then it does. But we should not take away their property as a government entity. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. And so our next question is about transportation. And so while visitors contribute to our traffic ingestion on Kauai, no doubt, the surge in traffic when schools returned in August underscores the impact of our resident commuters as well. In addition to infrastructure improvements, we have been exploring various efforts to reduce traffic congestion, such as expanding bus services, developing safer bike lanes or any bike lanes, encouraging walking through improved sidewalks and pathways. However, our island's rural nature and dependence on cars present unique challenges. What solutions to ease traffic congestion on Kauai resonate most with you?
Well, we all know how bad traffic is in infrastructure. Two lanes going west, two lanes going north will help. We've had many roads that were in place right outside Waillua that we bottlenecked. We have a two-lane coming out of Kapahai that needs bottlenecks again, right? We have some land next. We grow farmers. At one time, willing to either sell or give us that land. We have the opportunity to work with state. Our House of Representatives and our senators should be working with our governor and be able to get some federal funding. But we need more opening of lanes going to and from. As far as the tourists, we, prime example of Hyaina and Ka Beach and busing tourists in and out. I think tourists should not have the opportunity to rent cars. I think if they want to rent a car for a day, then they schedule the activities around that car and they rent that car. Otherwise, we should be busing our tourists to and from designated areas. Kokei State Park, Polihale, Kikaha Beach, Hyaina, the ATV tours. There's Koloa. Oli runs a great ATV tour. We should be busing our tourists down there, not having them use a vehicle to get there. So we have that in place right now and I'm not sure. I believe they're parked by Waipaa. The mayor and our council and our constituents statewide worked really hard to get that in place and it's working phenomenal. Why don't we put that in place all over? We're working on Puipu. We have a bike lane right now. We call it a cleaner and more travelable city. I believe one of our engineers, and I drew a blank on his name, but Michael Moore, Michael Moore. He's all into that. And I like that, especially for tourists, because our locals like to drive their vehicle. But our tourists should be walking, biking, and catching bus. And for the bus, Councilman Kagawa made up an excellent idea, you know, that we have too many bus availability routes for people that are holo-holo during lunchtime. I mean, we should be busing our workers in the morning and in the evening. But if we can save some of that money and cut the cost of our bus program and put that money towards infrastructure, towards middle-class housing, we have the ability in our budget to do that. And we're not. And we should. We need to chip away at our problems with the financial funding that we have, our revenue stream, and solve problems, you guys. There's a world of problems I like to talk about, you know, Department of Water, they need funding. Our solid waste landfill, they need funding. Our sewer treatment plants out in Waillua, we just spoke about that. We got to replace that pump. We have so much pressuring problems that unless we chip away and save here and there and put money where infrastructure is, our keiki, our opio, which is teenagers, our mopuna, mopuna, which is grandchildren, will not have a place to call home. Kauai will not be a home for our next generations.
Thank you.
You can tell that there's a real passion, like you genuinely can feel the passion behind the words that you're speaking. And I understand as we're focusing in the lens of traffic that we need to support an infrastructure piece. However, many individuals have had not the strongest feelings of adding additional lanes to our existing highways and having to understand the plans of that, as we saw with the additional lane from Kapahai bypass into the highway and then again bottleneck after the bridge. How do you manage the influx of the traffic when we do have a challenge with the infrastructure? I think that is a pressing issue as well.
And thank you for that. And thank you for mentioning passion. I sometime come across misunderstood by a lot of constituents who don't know me. And I like to pre-apologize to all of you. It seems like I may be overconfident, a little arrogant, and it's a misunderstanding. I'm just really passionate about fixing our island, being able to give all of the children out there the same opportunity that my wife and I have given our three sons. And I believe that I'm a key intricate part of the leadership of Kauai to make this happen. So I look in a camera and say, apologize if I seem arrogant and confident and I misunderstood. You're right. You watching me is right. I can be that guy. But it's only because I know the route we need to take and the solutions. And when you ask me about the infrastructure, putting two lanes, roads in, and how does it do? We should not be compromised on our quality of life with letting tourists drive all over this island like they do. They should be on the road at uncertain time and off the road at uncertain time. We should make it mandatory that they don't get on the road till nine o'clock in the morning. If they want to get on the road, they got to be on the road before five. Between six and eight is a transverse time for all of our families that are going to and from work. In the afternoon, between four and six, they should not be on the road going home. I'm sorry. We are giving up a quality of life to the tourists and we've become so tourist hungry. And what happened to lower numbers of tourists, high-quality tourists that come here and spend money and go home? We don't need the cheap tourists that come and spend three months and rent a turo and want to go all over the island when they feel like they want to go. Like what had happened to looking after our local people, looking after the people that have made Kauai and Nihao, which it is today? And before I move on, since I mentioned Nihao, Luke Evson and myself in my first term gave a tax exempt to Nihao. And for all the people that thought we did any special favors for the Robinson family, we didn't. We did a special favor for the Kanaka that lives on Nihao. Because if those taxes could not be paid by the Robinson family, another billionaire would own their island. And we don't want that to happen. We want the people that have the land to retain in their hands, just like our local families who have ag land. We don't want the property assessed values to go so high that they have to sell their land. We want their children on their land.
Great. We're continuing forward as we mention agriculture and food sustainability. Agriculture has the potential to play a larger role in Kauai's economy by providing local food, preserving open space, and contributing to economic diversification. However, challenges such as limited infrastructure, general disinterest from younger generation, and the need for startup financing persists. What is your vision for a thriving agricultural sector on Kauai? And what actions would you prioritize as a county council member to support this vision?
I've made several key points on that already about the small ranching on the ADC lands. But in Kilauea, at the Kilauea Farms, we have a man named Yosh who works out there. And we had some donation from a very wealthy family who gave some money and some land. And our county subsidized that program. Every year, we give money to that program. And that farm gives out groceries at a very economically cheap price for a kupuna and for our locals. And the only reason why they're able to do it is because they're subsidized by the county. So we already have a program in place. We just got to model that Kilauea program across the island. We need one of those programs on the west side. We need one of those programs in Hanapepe and Ale Ale. And we need one of those programs in the Lihui area. And if we can do that, we can have a food-sustainable resource of vegetables, fruits, and my livestock co-op program that I introduced and have it thriving. And here's my little kicker. Here's thinking out of the box. We do have a homeless problem and you guys did not bring that up. And I don't know why, but I can tell you what's troubling me. That's a topic that nobody has a solution for. It is. No one has come up with a solution. I've been talking about this with my council members, Mel Reposo, Bernard, Kipukai, and Ross. And we're talking about causing a homeless farm where we have our homeless on one piece of land, ag land. There we have those military tents and army cots and a place for them to shower and use the bathroom in the nice kept-clean bathrooms, part-of-part-of-potties. And they work two to three hours a day on a farm, raising papaya, banana, taking care of livestock. How cool would it be to empower our homeless community to be part of a solution, which is food sustainability, and have them have a purpose in life? And then they can transition from that into our, I call it, homeless housing structure that our mayor and our governor are working on. So they go from the farm where they work and they stay on a cot and they stay in a tent and they abide by the rules. And our healthcare services go to this area and they're growing food and livestock. And then from there, they transition into that home, transitional housing. And then from the kahale, thank you, Mark. I lost the word, but thank you. And how cool would it be to set up a program and not to invite more homeless here? Because we don't want more homeless, but to take care of what we have. Because I don't think our people like to come to eat lunch or dinner in Lihui and see all the homeless walking around the street. I don't think our people want to go fish ulua behind the airport and have a whole bunch of homeless making them feel uncomfortable. Like, when do we come up with a solution-based problem equation that we can make happen? And that's something I would like to see happen.
Great.
Yeah, thank you, Billy. So next is, you get to talk a bit more about destination management and tourism. How familiar are you with the Destination Management Action Plan?
I know a little bit, Mark. It's not my forte. You know, as a council member, it's hard to dive deep into everything and to be very versed in everything. And I've answered many of your questions with solutions this morning, not just recognizing problems. I gave you solutions that some of them are in place right now.
The reason I ask is I'm just going to change the way I ask the question, that's all. Right? And so, you know, the plan aims to manage tourism in a way that benefits residents and visitors alike by promoting sustainable practices and enhancing community engagement. What are your top one or two priorities for tourism on Kauai?
I like to see high-end tourists on Kauai. I like to see the tourists that can afford those room rates. I believe since I looked at some of those room rates in Hyatt and Sonesta's and they're $800 to $900 a night. I don't know where the kamaaina come into play, you know? And when I raised those rates, it came out to be like anywhere from $0.90 to $2 a night. That's all. That's all what the tourists will pay when I raise that tax on hotel and TBRs. But I think we need more high-end tourists here. You know, I noticed the mayor works really well with the Japanese industry and bringing in the Japanese tourists who is very respectful of the land. And they tend to stay a couple of days, maybe a weekend, they leave. I don't want to see us to be totally dependent only on tourism where the roads are bombarded with rental cars and turo cars. And we, as locals, seem like we've been pushed out of our And we, as locals, seem like we've been pushed out of our lifestyle. We're not only trying to make a living here. We want to feel comfortable and have a lifestyle where we enjoy Kauai. You know, and I think if we don't manage our tourists and manage the visitor industry, we're going to be out of control. And we cannot be financially a slave to tourism. We have to have an economy that is diverse. And diverse meaning smart-growth economy, keeping the trades industry working, keeping our service-oriented industry working, our hotels, workers, bartenders, bellhops, nurses, schoolteachers, firemen, policemen. Do you know why I introduced that tax increase, Mark and Lexi? I want to tell you why. Because my solution is down two decades away, not just two years away. If I didn't raise that tax, where you think the money would come from to purchase land and put in infrastructure? I'm going to tell you where it will come from. From the budget. The budget that we very well give our fire and police good benefits, good pay. We're going to have to cut the pay. We're going to have to cut the benefits. And I said, we're not doing that. We're going to introduce a tax increase on the very people that make our local people have to compromise their life, which is the tourists. And I'm sorry, as I look into the camera, for the tourists from Indiana, from the tourists from Oklahoma, for the tourists from Japan or China. If you come to our island, you pay the extra fee to stay in a room, and that money goes towards a housing fund to make middle-class housing a possibility. A possibility for your keki one day, Lexi. Mark, maybe for your mopuna one day. Because I know something. When I sit on my land with my wife and I think about my three boys, that's not enough. I want to think about your boys and your kids and your daughter to be able to have land and a house that they can feel proud of. Because remember, Lexi and Mark, when your four or five generations of family members came to Kauai to better themselves from different countries, from Philippines, from China, from Japan, from Spain, Portugal, you name it, they came. Puerto Rico, they came. They came from England to make a better life. They came because they wanted their family to live here with them, not move away. And sometimes, I believe, our media, social media, news media, they control so much politics across our country, our state and our county. And they print inaccurate information to discredit potential political leaders. And I want to tell the audience, don't be fooled by this. Look deep into a person's historical legacy and characteristics that they have showed you year after year. 24 years as a school teacher, I've touched so many students' lives. You asked me about how do we diversify out of how do we build cost housing? I was the first teacher on Kauai to build a tiny home on Kapaa campus. A tiny home that was led by Principal Tommy John Cox and Evan Costa. We built a 12-by-12 tiny home, exterior and interior, walls framed in a classroom, taken apart and built trusses in a classroom and put up on a campus by students, female and male. When I put my mind to a solution-based equation, I'll make it happen. I'll make it happen for the people of Kauai. It's happening right now. I just need one more term to follow through with all of my things we have in place.
Thank you, Billy.
Great. Well, that moves us forward. Is there anything else you would like to share with the viewers as your closing statement?
As my closing statement, I've said a lot, but I have a prop that I wanted to show. Let's make Kauai home again. I believe this speaks volumes. And why I say this? Our forefathers, your forefathers, came generations ago. Whether it was mom and dad who came one generation from California or whether it was Chinese, Filipino, Japanese ancestors that came five generations ago. They came to make Kauai and Ni'ao home. They didn't come here to work really hard, hard when there was very little tourism and there was a sugar industry where families worked hard, had housing, and put their kids to college. And now we depend on tourism. There's no economic viability with any type of industry. And Kauai and Ni'ao is not home anymore, you guys. It's not home. But I can tell you one thing. When I show you this sign and I tell you to look at this word, "home," again, the few bills that I put into place to increase density on ag land, to tax the tourist industries, to put money into a housing coffer, to buy land, put in infrastructure, build middle-class housing, those things that we did ensures that maybe one day our children, grandchildren can call Kauai home again. I don't think it's impossible. I think the viewers watching today with the right decisions on who they want as their leaders, solution-based leaders, not the ones who talk, the ones who implement language as bills signed into law, voted by at least four council members. You need a team of four. Nothing gets passed unless you have four. Our job is to make bills that make Kauai a better place. Our job is not about certificates. Our job is not about visiting every event and waving. Our job is not trying to meet with large landowners and solve a problem. That's not what we do. We make laws that get signed into bills and take action. And that's what Billy DeCosta does for the people of Kauai and Ni'ao. I take action. Thank you so much. I feel very passionate, as all you viewers can see. I love this island. I love Ni'ao. I love growing up with the people from Ni'ao who worked on the same plantation as my dad and my grandpa. And I want to look into the camera and look into the people's eyes and tell you, I am a man of my word. I've done much good for Kauai. Consider me in one of your seven votes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Billy. That was great. It was great to hear your passion today.
Thank you.
Yeah. So mahalo nui loa for joining us today. We hope these interviews give you a clearer understanding of the candidates and the future they envision for our beloved island.
We'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the incredible support that made this series possible.
First, a big thank you to Hawaii Crop Improvement Association.
We also want to express deep gratitude to the Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association, Kauai Chapter, for their continued partnership.
And a special thanks goes out to Hoikee, Kauai Community Television, for providing a platform to bring these important conversations to you.
We are also grateful for our Kauai Island Utility Cooperative for their unwavering support of our community initiatives.
And thank you to KKCR, Kauai Community Radio, for helping us reach more of you across the island.
We couldn't have done this without Kikaha Agriculture Association, who have been champions of local engagement.
And last, but certainly not least, we heartfelt thanks to Meridian Pacific for their generous support of this effort.
Remember, your voice matters. Make it heard. Be sure to vote in the upcoming election and help shape the future of Kauai.
Thanks again for watching. Ahui ho.
Ahui ho.